Six oh seven P M. Sasha, can we have a roll call, please?
Student trustee Parmigiani?
Here.
Student trustee Byrne?
Here.
Trustee Withrow?
Here.
Trustee Gonzalez Ewan?
Right here.
Trustee Napoleon Villarice?
Here.
Trustee Delphine Polk? Trustee Johannes?
Here.
Trustee Gonzalez Brito?
Here.
Trustee Quinlan?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Now say the pledge of allegiance. You want to lead us?
And foundation under our individual.
And we have a report of action taken in closed session. There was no reportable action taken in closed session. Quick report. Chancellor, can we have an acknowledgement of our outgoing student trustees, our amazing outgoing trustees?
You got it right, Board President Quinlan, our outstanding trustees. So trustees tonight, we honor our two tremendous outgoing student trustees, Pierce Byrne and Sophia Parmigiani, for their exceptional leadership to the Peralta colleges. Throughout their term, they've shown what student leadership truly looks like, rooted in care, committed to community, and driven by purpose. They've been actively involved on their own campus through clubs at Berkeley City College, and they've made it a priority to support and uplift fellow student leaders at all of the campuses, helping to onboard new student voices and build connections across our colleges. The impact of their community building was never more evident to me in the student representation on our district-wide governance committees for the first time in a long time. So much appreciation to our two trustees for working with me to identify students for those really important roles in our shared governance. And then also, the Laney Associated Student Government three-on-three basketball tournament this spring was where I saw lots of student representation from the campuses competing against each other in a really fun thing, and I know our two student trustees had a tremendous impact on cultivating that care. They helped lead district-wide student governance convenings, brought attention to basic needs through targeted outreach. They even did social media messaging, which I'm so appreciative of. And I know trustee Byrne just recently released a new hit as well that will be on a Peralta Gems announcement soon. But both of you played an important role in the rollout of the Peralta Safety App, too, based on student concerns. And all your efforts have directly impacted student well-being and connection. Pierce and Sophia, your advocacy has strengthened our community, and your legacy will continue to shape the student experience for years to come. Again, really, anyways. And I just think like you really helped our staff, really. So I even know Director Johnson and Executive Director Priggin, both really, you've really helped them know what it's like to have a student voice helping design the things that we're building out for students. So thank you for your leadership, your energy, and your unwavering commitment to making Peralta better for all students. So, thanks.
I'd just like to add, the board feels a great deal about the work you guys have done, and thank you very much.
So if you want to open it up for any of the trustees who might want to make comments, and then we'll come forward, all the trustees, if you would join me at the floor to give our two student trustees their awards, which say, "In recognition of your outstanding leadership and service as the voice of the Peralta Community College District and its students," honoring our two student trustees on June 25th, 2025. So.
I just want to echo what others have said, just thank you. But in addition to that, this year we had some, like, seriously tough decisions to vote on, and both of y'all did your research and decided to vote how you voted, no matter what. And if you were unsure of the research behind it, you said, hey, let me step back. And I appreciate that. I hope you take that moving forward. Just continue to do your research on your own and with others, and continue to stick by your word moving forward.
Anybody else sneaking?
Pierce and Sophia, I'm just really appreciative of the work you've done. I know I met with you no fewer than four times over the year, something like that. And every time, you came with, like, important, useful questions. Thank you for representing the students. And please stay in touch with us, like, collectively. Sophia, I know you're not going anywhere quite yet. But, and Pierce, congratulations on your transfer to Cal. Go Bears! Anyway, a real model of student leadership. And thank you for introducing me to our incoming crew as well.
I'll say a few words. It's been an honor sitting next to you for the last year. And really, please keep in touch. I think, Chancellor, we just posted something on Instagram or on social media about some of our previous student trustees. I would love to see updates for y'all.
So just one final item. I would really like to recognize the work the chancellor and our staff put in making sure that our student trustees had everything they needed to do such a great job. So thank you.
I want to offer the student trustees an opportunity, if you want to say anything you can, no pressure. Okay. Okay.
Yes, I didn't prepare a speech, but I just want everyone to know how grateful I am to have the opportunity to work with you all. There are definitely some highlights to the year. And as the chancellor has mentioned, working with Director Priggin on the safety app was definitely one of them. We really appreciated being able to be part of that project and especially during these times where these were actual, like, issues going around campus where it was very prevalent to do something about it. So working on the safety app, working with Director Johnson, like, it's so amazing. And also just seeing how much we've been able to work with you since the beginning. You're one of the first people who introduced yourself to me as a student trustee, going into student trustee. So it really is an honor to see how far we've come and also for all of the amazing things, like the accomplishments with Pierce, and just being able to work with you all. So thank you.
I do want to echo what Sophia said. I just wanted to thank the board for welcoming both me and Sophia. It was just, I, I don't know, I didn't really know what I was getting into. I knew about the role of trustee, but but I just was welcomed by the whole board. I'm just very grateful that you guys were able to give me this opportunity. I also want to thank Sasha as well for responding to my emails very, very late. But thank you for always being there, and the chancellor as well, for always being so welcoming and kind to both me and Sophia. And Mark Johnson as well, your dedication to just the students as well as just our back-and-forth conversations about getting the marketing up there, I think. And also being very open to having students onboard with upcoming art marketing campaigns. I thought that was excellent, and I thought it was just incredible, just what one conversation could lead to. So, and then finally, I want to thank Mr. Abdul Priggin's about giving us just access to this new upcoming software and the safety app that I think a lot of students are very excited to use, and I think it's very needed in this time. And although this year, like Sophia and my other trustees have mentioned, that it's been a hard year and hard decisions that have been made. I'm very glad that we were all able to get through that together. So thank you so much. And also, thank you so much for the video. We spent hours on that, working on this. It was the, it's on Peralta Gems now, so you can go check it out. But just highlighting what we've done over the year. So thank you so much. Thank you, everyone.
So now we're going to move to item 3.6, which is swearing ceremony for our incoming student trustee serving academic year 25, '26. So as we bid farewell to our two student trustees, I'm pleased to have the opportunity to welcome and officially swear in our two new student trustees. So I'd first like to welcome Ayann Malik. So let me tell you a little bit about Ayann. Ayann is a computer science student at Berkeley City College, currently completing his first year and preparing to transfer to a four-year university. His experience at BCC has been marked by active involvement in student life, including working with the Career and Transfer Center, supporting STEM peers at the Mesa Center, and participating in shared governance through the Inter Club Council and ASBCC, which is the Associated Students of Berkeley City College. Passionate about equity and student success, Ayann brings a district-wide perspective to his role as student trustee, aiming to improve awareness of campus resources and ensure that all students, regardless of background, feel supported and connected. His academic interests span software and hardware integration, computational imaging, and human-computer interaction. Outside of academics, Ayann enjoys road trips, night sky photography, video editing, and playing soccer with friends. He values collaboration and community and welcomes opportunities to connect with students both in person and online. So we'll now have Board President Quinlan swear in student trustee Ayann Malik.
Aye. Ayann Malik.
Do solemnly swear to carry out my responsibilities as student trustee?
Do solemnly swear to carry out my responsibilities as student trustee?
Of the Peralta Community College District.
Of the Peralta Community College District.
I do personally commit myself to convey the concerns-
To the student body.
I do personally commit myself to convey the concerns of the student body.
To the board of trustees and to convey the concerns of the board.
To the board of trustees and to convey the concerns of the board.
Of trustees to the student body to the best of my ability.
Of the trustees to the student body to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Now I'm pleased to share a little bit of background on Leo Migliaccio. Migliaccio?
Migliaccio, yeah.
Migliaccio, Migliaccio. Leo is a full-time student at Berkeley City College as well, with plans to transfer to a University of California campus to pursue a degree in business. Deeply committed to community building and student advocacy, Leo has held leadership roles in student organizations such as the Asian American and Pacific Islander, AAPI, club, and is active participant in campus life. He is driven by a desire to foster connections across the Peralta colleges and support initiatives that strengthen student engagement. Leo frequently attends in-person classes and is known for his approachable demeanor and dedication to helping others, including plans to become a peer tutor. As a student trustee, he is honored to represent his peers and is focused on increasing student presence on campus and inspiring a renewed sense of community in the district.
Come up. Repeat after me. Aye.
Aye. Leo Migliaccio.
Do solemnly swear to carry out my responsibilities as student trustee?
Do solemnly swear to carry out my responsibilities as student trustee?
Of the Peralta Community College District.
Of the Peralta Community College District.
I do personally commit myself to convey the concerns of the student body?
I do personally commit myself to convey the concerns of the student body?
To the board of trustees and to convey the concerns of the board of trustees?
To the board of trustees and to convey the concerns of the board of trustees?
To the student bodies to the best of my ability.
To the student body to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Very much.
Congratulations, student trustee Malik Migliaccio. We look forward to having you join us in August at our first official board meeting of the new academic year. Congratulations.
Item 3.7, approval of minutes. Can I now get a motion to approve the minutes from the June 10th board meeting?
Move approval.
Second.
So we had our first from trustee Delphin Polk and our second from trustee Withrow. Thank you. Is there any discussion? Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Student trustee Parmigiani? Yes. Student trustee Byrne?
Yes.
Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Ewan?
Yes.
Trustee Napoleon Villarice?
Yes.
Trustee Delphin Polk?
Yes.
Trustee Johannes?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Brito?
Yes.
Trustee Quinlan?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item 3.8, approval of the agenda. Can I now get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
The first was from trustee Withrow, and the second was from trustee Johannes. Is there any discussion? Please have a roll call.
Student trustee Parmigiani?
Yes.
Student trustee Byrne?
Yes.
Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Ewan?
Yes.
Trustee Napoleon Villarice?
Yeah.
Trustee Delphin Polk?
Yes.
Trustee Johannes?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Brito?
Yes.
Trustee Quinlan?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item 3.9, we will now move to the public comments. Board clerk, do we have any public comments tonight?
No, Board President, we do not.
Item 4.1, our district service center presentation of the board of trustees. Item 4.1, Chancellor?
Thank you so much, Board President. Trustees, I'm excited tonight in support of the board's 24, 25 goals. The District Service Center Administrative Services Team, many members of the team will present highlights of collaborative initiatives we're implementing of various strategies to strengthen processes and enhance operational efficiencies, which positively impact the district short and long-term financial health in facilities and maintenance, information technology, finance, and purchasing. I'm pleased to turn over to Chief Operating Officer Deputy Chancellor Greg Nelson to begin.
Well, good evening. How's everybody doing? It's kind of an interesting moment for me because this time, a year ago, y'all board elected me to join the district. So it's actually been a year come Monday, so it's been a very quick year. So, but I would just like to say, you know, over 25 years, it's been hard to have a good unified team, and I think we have a really good team here. You're going to hear from some of them tonight. Not just them, but they also have other staff that support them as well. Some of them are here tonight as well. So tonight with me, we have Associate Vice Chancellor Dr. Marla Williams-Powell. We have Chief Technology Officer Antoine Mahoule, Director of Facilities and Operations, B.C. Hoff, our Chief Engineer and also representing Local 39, Rodney Lamkin, and our Senior Buyer in Purchasing and also representing SEIU 1021, Seraphine Zomo. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to B.C. Hoff, and I hope you enjoy the presentation.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Deputy Chancellor. Good evening, Board of Trustees, Chancellor, College of Leadership, and Peralta Community. I am, as he said, B.C. Hoff, Director for Facilities and Operations for the district. My team consists of 70 members, and you can see over there the different positions that we have within my department, and it reflects the different services we offer to the campuses at large. This team is responsible for over 2 million square foot of building and grounds, maintenance, and operations. Last year, we completed proudly 5,000 work orders as a team. This image here is just a small reflection of the actual team that we have. They work behind the scene, rain or shine, to keep the campuses moving, responding to emergencies, and overall trying to make better the campuses as you come to them. We've had a lot of different challenges this past year that we've been approaching and trying to overcome. The theme for this year has been all about efficiency for us. So looking for different efficiencies within our facilities and how we can operate better. And to kind of give you some of that information, I'm having Rodney present to you some of the things we completed this past year that I think is really important for the district as we move forward.
Thank you, B.C., and as he said, I'm Rodney. This fall, we attacked what I like to call deep cleaning with a purpose. Across the district, we threw away tons, tons of surplus. It took us roughly six weeks, but to me, it seemed a whole lot longer because I was frontline with it, and some of that stuff was heavy, and I was extremely exhausted when it was all said and done, right? It took us roughly six weeks, but to me, it seemed a whole lot longer because I was frontline with it, and some of that stuff was heavy, and I was extremely exhausted when it was all said and done, right? But it was necessary. It was necessary because we uncovered things that had been sitting idle probably longer than I've been alive, right? If you guys take a look up there at the photos, that's just a small sample size of what we seen. You can walk into spaces and you can't even see the floor. Classrooms, not just a closet, classrooms where you can't even see the floor. Next slide, please. My wife has this thing that she says when she comes home and the house is messy, right? And it makes sense, but it don't. She'll say, she'll say, this house so messy, I can't even think straight. Y'all get down here and clean this house up, right? But by throwing away all that surplus, it allowed management to rethink on how to utilize the spaces. We were able to consolidate our employees here. We were able to offload buildings. And to me, being a part of maintenance and operation, that meant less square footage for me to deal with, less resources that we had to exhaust. And I hear you all talk all the time about money and how we need to spend it wisely, right? Fewer buildings equals fewer bills. That's just what it is. And and it's the simple things like consolidating the trash. I don't know if you all know Damian, but he's about six-five. He's the custodian here. He bending down eighty times a day to pick up trash, that's a lot. Not only is it a lot on his body, but that's a lot of manpower hours that we're spending that we can actually be doing work orders. So from a frontline perspective, the changes that we're making here are beneficial. Back on you, B.C.
Thank you, Rodney. So those are some exciting things that we're doing here at the District Service Center. Some other items that we were tackling this past year that we heard from the campuses were hardships around our utilities, specifically the cost. And the example I'll give you here is around our natural gas. So we experienced these huge fluctuations in pricing two winters ago, where the campuses were hit with these large bills. And in order to combat that, you, the trustees, thank you, approved a contract to allow us to enter in with a third-party distributor, which will actually help us save approximately five, three hundred to five hundred thousand dollars a year. This locks in a flat rate, so we're not dealing with this fluctuation constantly on our utility end. Another piece of our focus was on our compliance partnerships. So we have many partners out there in the community that we have to work with to maintain compliances for our campuses. If you look at this image, this picture is of hazardous waste at one of our campuses that accumulated over two and a half, or two-plus years worth of accumulation. And not only is it unsafe, but it creates a lot of problems for us when we have to work with our partners in the field. One of the partners I can think of is OSHA. Another one is the Fire Marshals. Specifically, if a fire marshal came to your campus and saw this, they would have the ability to levy heavy fines. They have the ability to mandate a fire watch, which is costly, and they also could just shut our campus down. And so working through these things, we were able to clean up our campuses, get the hazardous waste out, and then put in place processes so that this wouldn't happen again. The next one, this one is around, similar to what Rodney talked about, what we did here at the District Service Center, around looking at the space and learning how to utilize it better. We recognize that we need to do that at the campus level. So we initialized the study for space utilization back in January twenty twenty-five. And what that study is going to provide, it looks at, sorry, what it looks at is that fall of twenty nineteen and fall of twenty twenty-four, comparing those two timeframes around how are we utilizing the spaces, academic spaces within our campuses. And you can see all the different benefits that provides the campus. Primarily the one I think it's really important, it's going to help us define the needs for our future district facility master plan. And so our next step, outside of looking at the academic spaces, is looking at all of our non-academic spaces and how that flows into our facility master plan. Another piece of this is actually going to be one I'm really excited for, is the major equipment inventory. Now, when I came to this district a couple of years ago, I could not find data, at least data that was accurate, around the district, around all of our equipment. And as a maintenance operations team, it makes it really hard to maintenance and maintain and go through and do preventative work on all of our equipment if we don't even know where half of it is accurately. And so this is going to be a partnership where we do a study to go and find all those things, to learn where they are, how old they are, and be able to put together a plan for the district. So that way, we're not reactive, we're more proactive when it comes to our maintenance. Yep, perfect. So some of the examples you see here are going to be the dashboards that we're going to be generating with our partnerships with these groups. So that way, we have a real-time data on where our facility items are, what the conditions are. You'll have digitization of the O E M manuals, which are basically our owner manuals on how to maintain our equipment and who manufactures these equipment. We'll be partnering with multiple different groups to gather that data. And the best part is, it's software that's non-proprietary, so we don't have to pay a licensing fee every year for this. All of these initiatives, from space planning to the utilities, are moving us toward a more efficient and sustainable and responsive operations. So thank you for your time and support in all these endeavors. And now I turn it over to our colleague Antoine.
Thank you, B.C. Good evening. You can move to the next slide. Thank you. Today, I will provide you an update around cybersecurity and student fraud application. And as you can see in this slide, that's became a huge problem nationwide, and the state of California is the most hit because we have the largest school districts in the nation. So the question is, what Peralta is doing about this issue? So in this slide, you can see a sample of file data from the spring twenty twenty-five of how many student fraudulent applications we receive, around twenty thousand. Out of that, we clear around four thousand students. You can say around fifteen thousand students have been flagged as a fraudulent applications. So what is our process to have to clear the students out of these systems? So as you can know, C C C Apply is a platform that students need to go to apply to the State Chancellor Office, which they do have a fraudulent systems to detect fraudulent systems. When the file come to Peralta, we take that file and we also run it through our own system called A S R, which driven with A I, to process those applications. Once the students are flagged as a fraud, once the application is flagged as fraud, that application, we will ask the student to go back to the C C C Apply IDMe system to verify themselves. And once they complete that verification process, then they will come back to us to continue the enrollment process. And that's what we have in place right now, working with the in-house system, the in-house offices at the district and at the campus level. Next slide. So thanks to the Chancellor Office, we have received, we have been receiving funding to address some of these issues. One of the first funding we received was a one-time funding that allowed us to go ahead and upgrade our core infrastructure, which is the switches, routers, and all these great things that you see around the access point, providing wireless access point. And thanks to the Board for your approval of those project. And we also did some project with the student automation. So we looked at the enrollment barrier, how students are getting into our system. And we realized we were processing a student application within forty-eight hours. So through these projects, we cut down the processing, processing time to from forty-eight hours to one hour, one hour, and the student will be able to get into our system safely and securely. We're also doing penetration testing yearly to look where we are with all the systems, technology, all the security posture we have in place. And other that, then a third party will come and do the assessment. Other that, then remediation effort will be in place. Then we work with the campuses, with all the I T team, district-wide, to address those issues. Next slide, please. So in this slide, I'm going to talk about the new, the new project we have coming up. One of them is we are migrating our cloud system to our data warehouse, to the infrastructure, to the cloud infrastructure, to make it more secure. And we want to thank the Board for approving that project last board meeting. And we are going, we are also working with the campuses to unify our responses and also to align our business practices and enforce all the, all the standards. Because we have computer standards, laptop standards, and all that stuff, security standards. We want to ensure that everyone is following the standard and using those standards so we can keep the district safe and secure. And other, the other work we're doing, we scaling our processes and optimization and by using A I to automate some of the process, to speed out certain processes, and also allowing the business to do some new projects, fun projects, that is, my colleague Marla William-Powell will speak to you about. Thank you, Marla.
Thank you. Good evening. Over the past year, the finance team has held a variety of listening spaces for district stakeholders and vendors alike to learn more about the many pain points associated with doing business with and within the district. We've heard loud and clear some of the frustrations expressed by vendors and staff. Contracts being stuck in various places and a long process and also being overcomplicated process, it was very difficult to actually understand. And it also inhibited our ability to pay our vendors in a timely manner. In response to some of those challenges that were shared, we focused our efforts on increasing visibility to promote a, to promote bid proposal opportunities, improving the vendor onboarding experience, speeding up contract and payment processes to better serve our vendors. Seraphine will now talk a little bit more about how the team has worked thus far to improve the overall vendor experience.
Thank you. Thank you, Marla. I'm here to echo what Marla said. In the fall of twenty twenty-four, we transitioned our vendor registry, our procurement management, from vendor registry to Planet Bids at no cost. Planet Bids offers a robust tool that reduces manual tasks in procurement, speeding the procurement's process and improving efficiency. It has a full bid management cycle, beginning from advertisements, electronic bid submission, evaluation, scoring, audit trails, among others. It's cloud-based and accessible to everyone from anywhere. This year, we've seen a sixty-three percent growth on vendor engagement and participation in bids, responding to bids. This encourages competition, transparency, and encourages participation from both small local businesses and large firms. One of the major issues we've encountered with vendors working with us, is doing business with us, is vendor registration. The process has been significantly slow because we use paper before. We had fax machines, so everything was faxed, got lost in the way, mail was never received. So we have now transitioned to a self-service platform in PeopleSoft this spring of twenty twenty-four. With the new vendor portal, we have an incredible response and turnaround time of immediately or less than another, an hour. This saves us three to seven days from the previous paper trail. Vendors can access and register twenty-four, seven, from anywhere and at any time. This portal has instant mail notifications and updates for all announcements. The same portal, all vendors will have access to view their purchase orders, their invoices, what payments have been paid against the purchase orders. So it will alleviate the frustrations and a lot of phone calls from frustrated vendors. With these two robust platforms, the district decided to schedule open house for vendors as outreach to the community. We scheduled three different open houses. We had one on the seventeenth, we have upcoming one on the fifteenth and July thirteenth. The July seventeenth participation was great. It had both new and existing vendors. This open house promotes communication on upcoming opportunities by making vendors aware of ongoing and upcoming projects. By doing this, we locate and encourage small local businesses, vendors to participate in our solicitations. We provide education and guidance on the process of doing business with the district, how to go about it, and how to use the platform we have currently. These open houses are not just about information, they're about building relationships, promoting fairness, and strengthening our procurement outcomes. And with that, I'll lead you to back to Marla. Thank you.
Thank you.
The finance team has worked collaboratively with our legal department, legal and legal counsel, to develop a standard agreement that can be used for small-dollar services, for supporting services such as artists, D Js, and guest speakers. The performance agreement offers an easy and simplified alternative to the expanded I C C Independent Consultant Contract Process. Services executed by the performer agreement are eligible to be paid via the direct pay process, which is also new. It's a service extended to our district colleagues for expediting low-value goods and services under the three thousand dollar threshold and bypassing the purchasing process, which utilizes the use of requisitions and purchase orders. The implementation of both of these initiatives or both of these projects has enabled us to speed up vendor payments from thirty to sixty days to less than a week in many instances. The Independent Consultant Contract, otherwise known as the I C C, again, here we've worked with legal counsel and the legal department to work, to develop a standardized template as well as terms and conditions that can support a variety of services. And this document actually addresses the headache that was once experienced by having to track multiple iterations or frequent back and forth between the end-user in Legal and Brandy Howard in Legal Services, Sasha as Board Clerk, as well as the Purchasing Division. Working with I T has also afforded us the opportunity to reduce the number of required approvals in this process. So we've actually reduced, reduced the requirements from fourteen approvers to five. You, the Board, recently approved the college president signatory limit. Thank you. Because that actually plays into the president's authority to approve contract engagements from five thousand dollars to fifty thousand dollars. And so those contracts, once approved by the Board President, actually go straight to Sasha for publicizing on the board, on the board agenda. So it doesn't have to go back and forth to Legal and it doesn't sit in Finance, so there's a straight shot into getting these things approved. These projects support our effort in strengthening the relationships with vendors and the district. I would like to say that, thank you, Chancellor, for establishing the C I P team, which is the Contracts Improvement Team. And we've worked long, hard, and tirelessly in finding the correct format, the correct verbiage, and trying to get all parties on board to create this template. So thank you very much for that. I'll now turn it over to Dave Vigo. Thank you. I'll now turn it over to Dave Vigo, our Finance Director, to tell you a little bit more about other projects that we're working on.
I'm short, so I need to adjust. Good evening, everyone. Thank you, A B C Williams-Powell. As part of our ongoing commitment to innovation, efficiency, and service excellence, the Finance Services Team is proud to share key updates on two major internal initiatives. The implementation of new budget software and a modernized account payable system. These tools represent a transformative step forward in how we support colleges, manage resources, and data-informed decisions. Because our annual budgeting process relies heavily on spreadsheets, it is often time-consuming and prone to human error. Additionally, the lack of real-time collaboration and means we typically wait up. Act, additionally, the lack of real-time collaboration and prone, and means we typically wait up to a week to receive feedback from the colleges or other departments. To improve efficiency and accuracy, we are investing in a modern budgeting tool called IUNA, formerly Coestica. Our new budget software offers a comprehensive solution for strategic financial planning across the district. With multi-year forecasting capabilities, whoo, IUNA allows us to project up to ten years into the future and analyze data going back five years. This enables more effective scenario modeling, allowing finance teams to plan for va- various possibilities based on real-time inputs. One of the significant time-saving features is the real-time position control. That was my headache. Previously, staff spent many hours managing multiple PeopleSoft queries to track positions because HCM is not talking with finance. So IUNA consolidates this work, dramatically improving efficiency and accuracy. Because IUNA is fully integrated with PeopleSoft, data duplication is eliminated and teams are always working from a single source of truth. Next slide, please. Thank you. Another major enhancement is the ability to manage grants directly within IUNA. All grant budgets and documentation will now be stored in the system, ensuring access and reducing the time spent tracking down information or waiting on emails. Additionally, the software will allow us to build future budget documents for all types, for all fund types include, including grants. The rollout is planned for early twenty twenty-six with training for college personnel beginning in fall twenty twenty-five. These tools will elevate our budget planning process, improve transparency, and support stronger financial stewardship throughout the district. I would like to thank our finance team, they are here today, IT, of course, and Ed Services for collaborating to make this happen. Next slide, please. To complement our budgeting improvements, we are also implementing Astute AP, a smart invoice processing system that directly connects to PeopleSoft. So our current accounts payable process is highly manual and inefficient. That's all we know. All vendor invoices are sent to a single shared email address, requiring one AP staff member to review and forward each email to the appropriate team members. So we have at least four AP specialists. So one is reviewing and sending those because we are, uh, dedicated to one colleges, one AP specialist. We also have manually verified that each invoice matches the corresponding purchase order, which adds to processing time and increases the risk of errors. This upgrade simplifies the invoice submission process. Vendors or staff can email invoices to general AP inbox, and from there, the system automatically processes and transmits the data to PeopleSoft once it was reviewed, once it's reviewed by the AP specialist. So this change significantly reduces manual data entry, speeds up payment timelines, and ensures better tracking. It pays people faster and improved vendor relationship. In the future, the software will also include robust, outstanding payments and improved vendor relations. I'd like to thank all our AP specialists, IT, for working on this project and giving feedback to improve the system and process. We thank the board for approving all these initiatives and investments. That's it for finance. I will turn you over to Deputy Chancellor Nelson.
Aren't they great? It was a really great job. I really appreciate all the hard work. Um, from engineering being here at five AM to many of the finance folks being here until eight PM at night, uh, they really do a hard, uh, work to get this stuff done. Uh, this is just the tip of the iceberg, or some of the things we've taken care of. It's really important for us to embrace the board's goals, our own efficiency, but also to re-strengthen the partnerships we had with third parties, outside vendors, but also to our campus, campus constituents, uh, that we serve on a day-to-day basis. So it's important for us to continue this effort, uh, continue this work. I'm really proud of the team and how much everybody, uh, centered around the, the focus this year, which was efficiency, whether that be in physical resources or financial resources. So I'm really proud of them. And with that, uh, board president, I will turn it back over to you.
Thank you very, very much, not just for the presentation, for the amount of work and creative thinking and, uh, just amazing. I just did a short calculation on just one of the improvements you talked about, that the amount of time it takes for a student to enroll now. Uh, forty-eight hundred percent improvement in efficiency and time, which is amazing. Um, I think, uh, the rest of the world could hope for that much. And I'm sure our students and everybody, faculty, everybody appreciates the work that you guys are doing. So thank you very much. Any board members have any other comments?
Um, well, first of all, I want to say thank you. And, uh, secondly, I just wanna like, standing ovation, thank you. You know, a lot of times the work that we focus on as a district is the stuff that is directly student-facing. And so, a lot of times, the district office is really, when it works well, we don't hear anything about it. Um, and that's a problem because it makes the people who do that work invisible. What I personally appreciated about this is just bringing forward the countless hours and the dozens and dozens of, of, of real-life human beings, working people, coming to make all of our work work better. And, um, the results kind of speak for themselves. Um, so thank you, uh, so much for that. Um, I did have one question about the, the fraudulent applications. Um, and I'm trying to understand the data point that I saw up there. And it, it looked like there were roughly twenty thousand new applicants, nineteen thousand and some change. And then, if I looked at it, if I, if I understood it, three-quarters of those roughly were fraudulent and a quarter of them were legit?
Yes.
Wow. Okay, so thank you. Um, I know as an instructor, last year, I, I remember just like, half of my students on my rosters were fraudulent. And it was really, it was really just, it was, it was so heartbreaking because I knew that that meant that a lot of students who wanted to be in my classes, um, their, their spot was gone. Um, and then, you know, it was very costly. So, you know, that piece of work, I'm sure for this district made an enormous, uh, difference for the students who got seats in the class and the headaches that the, everybody else didn't have to deal with, um, because you'd done that on the front end. Um, the other thing that I was trying to understand a little bit on the processing that, that board president Quinlan brought up on the, the processing for the, the applications, he brought it from forty-eight hours down to
To one hour.
To an hour, something like that.
That, that was a man- manual processing, and it was, it used to be done, there was somebody who sit there creating thousands, we, you know, old enrollment account manually. So with enhancing our tools and all the technology we have in our hands today, we're able to process, automate that and gain that, uh, the one hour.
Yeah, I, you know, I knew some students who were applying, um, and were just putting in their applications and they were like worried, oh god, this is gonna take me days, it's, and then they got it back right away and they were so excited to, to like, get into the class right away. And so I saw that happen on the front end because I was kind of worried. Um, and so just, you know, my own, in my own family and friends, I saw the result of that, uh, very, very tangibly. So thank you so much. That's it.
Anybody else?
First of all, how wonderful to see all of your faces because we see your names, we've heard of what you've done, but to actually see all of you and hear from you is really fantastic. So thank you. And how amazing to see you all smiling. Like, you are happier. The work is, you're able to do the things that you really need to and can do. So just, uh, an incredible applause for all the work, all the diligence, all the patience because there's a part of me that's thinking, I am so glad none of you left years ago because you've seen this, you've experienced it, and it's just nice to know that you are also here at the other end of it now that it's working so incredibly well. So thank you for what you've done. Thank you chancellor, and thank you deputy chancellor and everybody on the administrative team helping you all kind of think this through. And as you were saying, Marla, thank you for CIP, right? Yeah, yeah. Thank you, guys. Amazing.
I will just add one other thing. You know, uh, people are asking me these days, how are things going at Peralta? And my answer is uniformly great, like, quite seriously, great. And you're, you're noticing the piece about the smiling? You know, it's like, you see it in the board, the board, it's like, we're doing a lot better. Um, but you've noticed.
You are?
Uh, the board is doing a lot better, but I, I think, I, if you're any, if you're representative, the, with the smiling faces, maybe, maybe the staff is doing somewhat better too. So, thank you.
So just one final comment. I, I know you represent a wide variety of departments. And would you please pass this board's gratitude on for all the people that work with you that make this happen on a daily basis? Thank you very much. And that, chancellor, I think our meeting is adjourned.